Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids Council Meeting for Tuesday, September 17th. I guess it's not official until I go. There we go. Welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting, Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. We have some guests with us tonight. We'd like to invite up to the front as we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Whatever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Well done. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. First item on this evening's agenda is to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I will make a motion to adopt the agenda with one modification. We would be removing item number nine, the Development Agreement with Centra North, and that would be on our October 1st meeting.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Any other discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. And the agenda is adopted with the one modification, striking item nine. The first item then on our agenda is to proclaim October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So, whereas the community problem of dom... or actually, so let's just introduce this, I guess, here. We're being asked to proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Coon Rapids by the Alexandra House. All proclaim... oh, all right, here we go. Whereas, the community problem of domestic violence has become a critical public health and welfare concern in Anoka County, and, and whereas, domestic violence is a crime, the commission of which will not be tolerated in Anoka County, and perpetrators of said crime are subject to prosecution and conviction in accordance with the law, and, whereas, over thousands of women, men, and children have and will continue to access assistance from Alexandra House Incorporated, a domestic violence service provider, and, whereas, domestic violence will be eliminated through community partnerships of concerned individuals and organizations working together to prevent abuse while at the same time affecting social and legal change, and, whereas, October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and, whereas, during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Anoka County organizations will inform area residents about domestic violence, its prevalence, consequences, and what we, as a concerned community, can do to eliminate its existence. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the city council and citizens of our city, officially proclaim October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Coon Rapids, proclaimed the 17th day of September, 2019. What did I do?
I think we have somebody here?
Oh, we do. Oh, come on up. Would you like to say anything from the podium? I'm sorry.
If you don't want to.
I didn't realize anybody was here.
I am here, and I am very honored to be here.
All right. Come up to the amble and introduce yourself. Thank you.
I am Tina Bronson. I'm the Communications Marketing Director for Alexandra House, and I see some very friendly faces on the council. Brad, Steve, Brad, Jerry. Hi. And I'm actually supposed to say hi from Sue Redmond and from Connie Moore. They're like, make sure you say hi from me. But I also want to extend our gratitude for you recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and for your ongoing support of Alexandra House. Coon Rapids happens to be the highest user, their residents, the highest user of Alexandra House services, and we're very grateful for your support, not only financially, but sharing this, this month, and supporting our events, and, and participating in different functions that we have. In 2018, Alexandra House served over 2,800 residents of Anoka County. 372 of those were from Coon Rapids, and they received over 4,500 services individually. So that might mean a person may come in because of a lethality assessment that the law enforcement would do, and then would use our legal advocacy services to get an order for protection, go to a support group, maybe come into shelter. So one person might use multiple services, which is why you get that, that 4,500 number. But additionally, we, we did presentations in Coon Rapids High School, and 645 students benefited from presentations from our advocates, and then another nearly 300 Coon Rapids residents benefited from community education and presentations and professional trainings that we conducted. So we do a lot with Coon Rapids, and we're very appreciative of that. And I want to extend an invitation to everybody to come to our Hope Fest, which is the last weekend in September, September 28th, and that is our lead into Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have our silent witnesses out, which is an exhibit of all the individuals that we know of who've been lost to domestic violence in Anoka County. It's very moving. We read the names of all the witnesses. You can read the stories of what happened to them. We do a walk in remembrance, and we pledge that we are going to continue working to end this violence in our community. So I would invite all of you to come. You can find information on our website at AlexandraHouse.org. It's a really great event that rallies people together and recommits the, our work towards that cause. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Yeah.
And say hi to Sue Redmond County.
Very good. Next, we have our Girl Scouts River Valley Spirit Week proclamation. Since 1912, Girl Scouting has fueled the leadership pipeline in our communities by preparing and inspiring millions of girls and women to be active leaders with the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism. Girl Scouts River Valley serves 28,000 girls in Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Iowa, and we are going to be asked to proclaim Spirit Week in Coon Rapids. So if I could get everybody back up again in front of the dais here, I'll come out with a microphone. oh, that's hot. It's okay if the leaders come up too. Do you want your leaders up here too, or are they not coming up?
Mom.
Oh, mom. All right. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I will give you an opportunity to introduce yourselves and just tell us a little bit about maybe what you've got going on, or what's, what's up. All right. Girl Scouts River Valley Spirit Week. Whereas, since 1912, Girl Scouting has fueled the leadership pipeline in our communities by preparing and inspiring millions of girls and women to be active leaders with the highest ideals, ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism, and, whereas, throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts has been the preeminent leadership development organization for girls where they can unleash their potential to be the leaders our world needs both now and in the future, and, whereas, Girl Scouts expertise and timeless programming offers every girl a chance to practice a lifetime of leadership in a girl-led, girl-focused, and all-girl environment, and, whereas, through Girl Scouting, girls gain courage, confidence, and character to make their local communities and the world a better place, and, whereas, girls get exposure to new experiences in science, technology, engineering, and math, STEM, the outdoors, and entrepreneurship through Girl Scouts' unique programs, and, whereas, 28,000 local Girl Scouts members and 9,000 volunteers will be celebrating 107 years of this American tradition and its contributions to the community. Therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, do hereby proclaim September 16th through 22, 2019, as Girl Scouts' River Valley Spirit Week throughout this city, proclaimed the 17th day of September, 2019. That's a lot. That's awesome. Maybe you could just go through and introduce yourselves here, and then on the way back, whoever wants to actually talk about the group for a moment and just hold on to the mic and tell us.
Hi, my name is Sarah Iberg, and I'm a Girl Scout troop leader. I was also a Girl Scout when I was little.
Hi, my name is Nina.
Hi, my name is Mara.
Hi, my name is Allie.
Hi, my name is Cece.
Hi, my name is Belma.
Hello, my name is Paige.
Hello, my name's Samantha.
Hi, I'm Sarah Smith, and I am a member of the Sand Creek Service Unit here out of Coon Rapids, and right now, we're actually having a troop formation event over at the Civic Center going on right now. So we've, my daughter Paige has been in Girl Scouts for 11 years. She is in 10th grade. She has earned her Silver Award, she's working on her Gold, and because of Girl Scouts, she was able to go to Belize this year. All by selling cookies. So, thank you so much, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Demmer for passing on my email. So, thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you, and let me present this to you. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, now they're off to their troop meeting.
Yep. Are there going to be leftover cookies?
All right. Council, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September 3rd meeting. What happened?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September 3rd.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Any corrections or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those minutes are approved. We have one, two, three, four items on our consent agenda. The first is to approve the therapeutic massage enterprise license for Cloud Nine Massage LLC, 11284 Robinson Drive. Mr. Perry has leased the space and the building at 11284 Robinson Drive for the purpose of opening a massage enterprise business. He has paid the background investigation and license fee for a therapeutic massage enterprise license, and has also provided proof of the required liability insurance. Approval is contingent upon the Police Department background investigation findings, a successful building code enforcement inspection, and city licensure of a massage therapist for that location. So with the consent agenda this evening, we're looking to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to Mr. Perry for Cloud Nine Massage LLC, located at 11284 Robinson Drive Northwest, pending a successful background investigation finding, a successful building code enforcement inspection, and city licensure of a massage therapist for that location. Item five is to accept the right-of-entry agreement with Coon Rapids AH1 LLP. At the June 18th, 2019 city council meeting, real estate equities received site plan approval for the construction of a 168-unit apartment building to be located northeast of Springbrook Drive and 94th Avenue. The right-of-entry agreement allows the city to periodically enter the property to exercise hydrants and valves and flush the water main system. The utility and drainage system within the site are considered private, and the property owners will continue to own and maintain these items. This right-of-entry agreement simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate public safety. So the motion is to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with Coon Rapids AH1 LLP for a proposed 168-unit apartment building to be located northeast of Springbrook Drive and 94th Avenue, PID 25-31-24-44-0091. I'm assuming you wanted me to read that since you put it in there. The third item on our consent agenda, which is actually the sixth item on this evening's agenda, is to accept, accept the right-of-entry agreements with Red Mill Properties LLC and Nomican Properties LLC. On June 20th, 2019, Red Mill Properties LLC received site plan approval from the planning commission for the construction of a 6,100-square-foot multi-tenant commercial building proposed to be located on the northeast corner of the Wells Fargo office site. These right-of-entry agreements for the existing Wells Fargo Building, Nomican Properties LLC, and the proposed multi-tenant building, which is Red Mill Properties LLC, will allow the city to periodically enter the properties to exercise hydrants and valves and flush the water main system. The utility and drainage systems within the sites are considered private, and the property owners will continue to own and maintain these items. These agreements, just like the last one, simply provide the city the ability to ensure appropriate public safety. So with this action, we will be accepting the attached right-of-entry agreements with Nomican Properties LLC and Red Mill Properties LLC for the existing Wells Fargo Building and proposed multi-tenant building to be located at 3,200 Main Street. And then, item seven on this evening's agenda, which is actually the fourth and last item on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 19-92, accepting a grant from Anoka County for new recycling lids for the Civic Center. The Civic Center staff have been working with Minnesota Waste Wise Foundation on another grant to streamline waste disposal at the Civic Center. This grant is for new lids and signage for bins to help people know which bin to put their waste in. This program to separate organics from trash has been successful, but staff are still finding that certain populations are having trouble with the learning process. I am part of that population. I looked at it and I go, I don't know where to put this. The grant is for $557,000 for new lids for waste and organics bins, plus signage for the waste organics and recycling bins. There are four sets of these particular bins throughout the Civic Center, end of the building, including the employee lunchroom. There is no additional cost to the city involved in these new lids, so we will be recommending that the city council... this action would approve Resolution 19-92, accepting the grant in the amount of $557. I was surprised that the county has agreed to this grant not to exceed $10,000, and we're only spending 557. I think we did really good. So, that is the entire consent agenda. Is there any questions?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'd move approval, acceptance, and adoption of items four through seven listed in the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer. Questions or comments? Discussion, I should say. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we have one public hearing. Is this public hearing? Yeah. For vacation of public roadway easements for Port Riverwalk. On July 16th, council adopted resolutions, several, ordering a public hearing for public roadway easement vacations for the Port Riverwalk area. The vacations are being considered because the HRA currently has a purchase agreement with Centra Homes to develop the HRA-owned Port Riverwalk site on the south side of Coon Rapids, near Avastad Street, with residential uses, including the sale of detached townhomes. As part of the sale to Centra, staff has been working on resolving various title issues with the site. One of these issues involves vacating streets within the site. The city is still working on title issues with Zilla Street and will not be moving forward with Resolution 19-79 that was adopted on July 16th. Once title issues have been resolved, the city will vacate Zilla Street. On July 16th, council adopted resolution numbers 19-73, 19-74, 19-75, 19-76, and 19-77 to consider vacation of public roadway easements. The process for vacating easements under the city's charter requires a public hearing and passage of a vacation resolution. All utilities and property owners affected by the vacations have been notified and all have no objection to the vacations. City staff believes the vacations are appropriate and in the interest of the public, given the benefit of redeveloping the Port Riverwalk site. So, do we have any... is there anything else you want to cover before we open the public hearing? Anybody have any questions from council? Hearing none. We will open the public hearing. If anybody is here to address council for resolutions 1973 through 1977 regarding the vacation of the streets in Port Riverwalk. Is anybody here to address council for that public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close.
Well, sorry, this is my first city council meeting.
Yes.
My name is Stephanie. I just live down that area, so I just came here to find out more information about it. I live off of Easter Road.
Okay.
So, sorry.
That's fine. That's fine.
Anyways, so I was just wondering if you guys...
Name and address for start.
Oh, Stephanie Barthel, 9850 Easter Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And I was just wondering if you guys are planning on getting rid of 9838 Easter Road and 9850 Building, Easter Road?
Okay. That's, yeah, that would actually be outside of the scope of this public hearing, but... Okay. So, Mr. Fernilius, or Mr. Hammer, or Mr. Brown, one of those three guys will talk to you after the meeting and tell you, and talk to you about it.
Okay.
Because that's, that's a separate entity from, separate action from what we're dealing with right now.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here for the public hearing on the vacation of the streets? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. And council.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move adoption of resolution numbers 19-87, 19-88, 19-89, 19-90, and 19-91, vacating a public roadway easement, and I believe this requires a four-fifths vote.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion? Mayor? Councilmember Griscoviac?
Clarification, I'm pretty sure I'm clear on this, but none of these vacancies are outside of the Centra-proposed Port Riverwalk site, are they? There's quite a few maps there. Might not be the best at reading maps, so I just want to clarify that.
No, none of them are outside of that development area.
Got it. That's the only question I had.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we are up to open mic and public comment. We only had one more item, and that was removed from tonight's agenda, so is anybody here to address council under open mic, public comment? Please approach the mic and state your name and address, and limit your remarks to three minutes, and I won't read the rest of this.
Will do. Good evening. My name is Kendall Qualls. I live at 755 Lilium Trail in Medina, and I want to, first of all, say thank you to the council members, mayor, and key staff. My name is Kendall Qualls. I'm going to actually run on the Republican ticket for US Congress in the 3rd congressional district. I announced my campaign 30 days ago, and really a lot of excitement, but I just, really just came to introduce myself, first of all, and just to recognize that I, this was my first city council announcement, and I wanted to come here consciously, and I'm glad I did. Just a brief background about myself, I actually lived pretty much all over the country. I lived, my father was serving in the military. I spent part of my time working through some difficult times as a kid. I lived in Harland, New York, in elementary school in the late 60s, when it was not, when it was at its worst. Lived with, part of my time with my father in Oklahoma when he was a jail sergeant there, and that's where I spent a lot of my time, but actually served in the military after college as an officer in the US as well as in South Korea on the DMZ. So I know what we do across the world as far as freedom in this country. And after I got out of the military, I spent 30 years in the healthcare industry. Half my time with Johnson &amp; Johnson on the pharma side, the other half on the med device side, with most recently as global vice president at Netronic. And right now, I am chief commercial officer for healthcare startup analytics, serving people that are diagnosed with cancer. With that said, I just wanted, again, to come out and introduce myself. I look forward to working with you. I am so fortunate to be elected in office. Look forward to working and serving with you here as well.
Well, very good. Well, thank you. You're up to a great start. You came in way less than three minutes.
Just because I have this much experience as a politician.
All right. Is anybody else here to address council for open mic tonight? Open mic, public comment? All right. Well, then we will close that. We don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are on to other business. Chief, wait, we have two chiefs in a row. We'll start with Chief Piper. That hand up went up first.
Mayor, council, as you know, the Hanson Bridge over the railroad tracks is expected to open to traffic the first week of November. You previously heard that. Today, I had a conversation with Commissioner Schulte, and that is still the target. They don't have an exact date, but that's what they're hoping for. With that said, in speaking with Commissioner Schulte, we're going to do a ribbon-cutting ceremony once that date's established, so we'll give you more information once we have it.
Excellent. Are we going to have those little train cookies again?
We could probably work that out. Actually, we have some leftover from before.
Real fiscal conservative there. Chief, Chief Wies.
Switching gears slightly. Thank you, Mayor, council. Saturday, September 21st is Love My Pet Fair, once again. So obviously, we're hoping for good weather, but it's an extremely popular event, runs from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Some of the activities this year I'd like to highlight, can do canines can have a presentation. Those are service animals. Let's see, there'll be pet tricks, but the highlight, of course, will be the police canine demonstration. We don't do a lot of those demonstrations, so if you want to be, see how our police canines work, show up at 11 o'clock and watch that. There's a pet parade. Last year, I think there was something like 600 people that showed up in, this is Riverview Park on 105th, just west of Hanson Boulevard, and we're expecting more based on Facebook interest, so... Oh, and also, the other thing I'd like to highlight is that the rabies clinic now is combined with Love My Pet Fair, which is a discounted opportunity to get your animal vaccinated. Vitally important to make sure your, your dog is vaccinated against rabies. It's 11 bucks. Can't get a better deal than that.
And somebody asked me a question about it yesterday. Can they have their, can their cat get a rabies shot? Do we know the answer to that?
I'm going to say yes.
Yes.
Yes? Okay, good.
And the question I got asked is, can you get a pet licensed through the city there?
We will be there with licenses.
Perfect.
Ready to go.
Thank you.
Right. Nothing but positive answers.
Yeah.
It really is a great event. I mean, even if you don't have a, I haven't had a pet since it started, but it's always really fun when you go there. There's all kinds of different booths and the demonstrations, and it's just a very festive event.
You want to take mine?
Nope. Because I'd have to clean up after it, I'm sure. All right. Other, other business to come before council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
After you're at the Love My Pet Fair, you could go to the movie in the park, Goosebumps 2, and so that's going to be at Sand Creek. It's 7:30 PM, so I believe it's our last movie in the park for the season, so come grab a blanket or a lawn chair and watch the movie in the park.
All right. Mr. Anderson isn't here from the golf course. He must have given up trying to get by on Foley, huh? If you watched the last council meeting, when you talked about Foley being closed, you saw, you saw his head just kind of go like that. It was, he hadn't responded, but...
Mayor, council, I can report that despite the closure on Foley, the golf course, people are finding their way to the golf course. In fact, I was up there on Monday, as some of the other Rotarians were, and the beautiful weather, there were people coming to enjoy the golf course. Happened to be the same day we were fog sealing the parking lot, and so there's a little bit of hopscotch to do to wedge that in on Monday, but we had a great August, and we just need some great weather into the fall to round out 2019, especially after the late spring that we had. So, I'll give the, that report for Tim, since I'm sure he'd be happy to share that.
All right.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I would just like to give a hearty thank you to the fire department in our neighbor cities, especially Ramsey and Andover, who came out on the 9/11 memorial over Highway 10. It was extraordinarily well-received, well-attended. It was also very impressive that all the branches of the services, the Marine Corps, the Air Force, the Army, the Navy, and even the Coast Guard were represented at various times up there, and the recruiters brought their recruits and poolies up there too, and, and it was a really touching ceremony as they brought the, the flag down at the end...
I would just like to give a hearty thank you to the fire department and our neighbor cities, especially Ramsey and Andover, who came out on the 9/11 memorial over Highway 10. It was extraordinarily well-received, well-attended. It was also very impressive that all the branches of the services, the Marine Corps, the Air Force, the Army, the Navy, and even the Coast Guard were represented at various times up there, and the recruiters brought their recruits and poolies up there too, and it was a really touching ceremony, as they brought the, the flag down at the end, and all those people contributed to it. So, again, well pulled off, wonderful event, and it really distinguishes Coon Rapids, I think, from, from the surrounding communities, but it also brings them in to support us as well. So, thank you very much.
I like how our program has encouraged others. I had appointments down at St. Paul that day, and as I went down 35E, or 35W, the Moundsview Fire Department was up there with their ladder and the, the flag and the good turnout, and it was just wonderful. All right. Any other business to come before council?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.